And call the City Council meeting to order. Clerk, please call the roll.
Councilperson Lamore.
Present.
Felder.
Here.
Whitman.
Here.
Steelgrave.
Here.
Vining.
Here.
Germaine.
Excuse.
Mayor Clark.
Present. I ask that we all please rise to the invitation and remain standing for the pledge of allegiance.
Guide us in our deliberations and discussions this evening. May our efforts promote the good of the residents of this city and all who visit.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands,
one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Clerk, next item, please.
The next item is the approval of the regular agenda.
So on the approval of a regular agenda at our work session, there was a discussion about amending the agenda to add an item for closed session. Councilman Lamore?
Yes, I'd like to make a motion to amend the agenda to include a closed session to encompass land acquisition and labor negotiations after citizen comments.
Second. Is he right? So there's a motion by Councilman Lamore, hit two, Councilman Vining to amend the agenda as stated of the comments. Clerk, please call the roll.
Councilperson Lamore.
Yes.
Felder.
Yes.
Whitman. Steelgrave.
Yes.
Vining.
Yeah.
Mayor Clark.
Yes. I did say Councilman Vining, correct? I did say, okay, so I think may I head on over there for a second. All right, next item, please, I'm sorry.
That's okay. The next item is the consent agenda, and for item B, approval of payments to vendors, the amount should read 1,467,299.89.
Thank you. Are there any items on the consent agenda that council wishes to have polled for further discussion? Items on the consent agenda. Any items on the consent agenda, those present here this evening wish to have polled for further discussion? We have several contracts and some work orders. Seeing none? Motion regarding the consent agenda. Councilman Felder.
I'd like to make a motion that all items on the consent agenda be accepted, placed on file recommendations carried out, and resolutions adopted.
Second. Counselman Felder, supported by Councilman Lamore, that all items on the consent agenda be accepted, placed on filed recommendations carried out, and resolutions adopted. Clerk, please call the roll.
Councilperson Lamore.
Yes.
Felder.
Yes.
Whitman. Steelgrave. Vining. Mayor Clark.
Yes.
Next item, please.
The next item on the agenda is council action, and it's item 3555, traffic control orders for removal of metered parking.
Mr. Pastu?
Thank you, Your Honor. As we discussed at our last work session, May 2nd, we were proposing to remove parking meters throughout the downtown. The attached traffic control orders would remove that. The time limitation will correspond with the time limit associated with the meters. The only remaining meter eventually will be the city hall here, and as we said, we looked at how the parking demand has changed as a result of certainly the pandemic and more people working from home, but also the reduction of downtown employment, particularly with the merger with Monroe Bank and Trust and First Merchants Bank as well. Excuse me. The activity in the court has changed as far as going more and more to electronic and filing and video type of hearings. And clearly, here in the city, we've done a lot of changes as well to encourage more and more electronic transactions as well as Dropbox activity. So the intent is to remove the meters, maintain the part-time limited parking for that, and then kind of monitor how that works and functions. Again, we'll still have the enforcement activity, but no longer the metering of throughout the downtown other than the city hall lot.
So Mr. Pastu, there's seven locations that are on here around the downtown area, but two locations still remain as being metered. Is that correct?
That would be City Hall, and then we still have 50 McComb, which is a city lot that's part of the transaction associated with acquiring the 212 East Front Street that would be part of First Merchants property as well.
And so as I just sort, so everybody hears and understands, while the meters are being removed and there won't be coins they have to put in, there will be time spaced still. There still will be parking enforcement, but also there's still the validation program that's accessible to use for those that may stay beyond the timeframe of the hour or two hours, what it might be, correct?
Correct.
Okay. I'll see if there's any other questions from council members. Councilman Felder.
Yes, will the meters just be covered up so that anyone can park there and it'll be posted that it's a two-hour limit? Or are we actually investing in the removal of the infrastructure?
We will be investing in the removal of the infrastructure with it. You know, again, the quote was, we have a historic downtown and historic meters as well. I think if we are going to replace them in the future, they will be with a kiosk, which is typically what you'll find in most communities these days.
So if events go unforeseen and this doesn't work the way that we had planned it, there will be some starting back up time, but you anticipate that that would be a cost that we would have to incur at some point anyway?
That would be the case, yes.
In that case, there's got to be a capital cost that accompanies the traffic control order.
You mean from our staff to remove them?
Certainly.
Yeah, that would be just one of the functions as time allows and permits with the.
That covered separately in the budget?
No, it's not of that magnitude. It's, and there's no sense, I mean, it'll still be covered up until they're allowed to have time to fit that into, you know, their work schedule with the DPS. It'll probably be two, three months before they all get removed, I would imagine.
Okay. Thank you, sir. Free parking in the downtown. I think it's good news for all.
A follow-up to that is if there are items that don't, may not work, I think that's also the opportunity then to do the analysis regarding the payment stations and those items that will be transitioned. It's been talked about in the past, but then it's a little more challenging, not just from a cost standpoint, but with the meters there. This gets us started with the meters. I won't say it's free parking because there's still costs associated for those that may decide to stay longer than what the timeframe allows if they don't validate. So any other questions on traffic control orders? If not, a motion.
Your Honor, I'll make a motion that traffic control orders 056-015, 066-011, 112-011, 167-013, 208-008, 306-005, and 309-005 be adopted.
There was motion by Councilman Lamore, supported by Councilman Steelgrave on item 3555, traffic controller, a removal of metered parking. Before I take the roll, I did want to mention also that while it was not an item for the traffic committee's decision, it was brought up at the last traffic committee meeting for discussion and awareness, and there was no objections from the committee, but it was not a voting item form. With that, clerk, please call the roll.
More.
Yes.
Felder.
Yes.
Whitman.
Yes.
Steelgrave.
Yes.
Vining.
Yes.
Mayor Clark.
Yes. Clerk, next item, please.
The next item is item 3537, budget amendment, general fund transfer to CDBG fund.
Thank you, Mr. Pastu.
Thank you, Your Honor. Council's aware of the budget amendment being proposed by administration, which would transfer $48,560 from general fund to CDBG. We received some additional funding in 2020 through the CARES Act, and as a result, some additional funding was provided. Supplemental funding entered into a separate sub-recipient agreement with Oaks Village in the amount of $50,000 for reimbursement of construction activities and costs associated with the purchase and installation of refrigeration units and point-of-sale system at the Village Market. There's a process involved in which federal procurement requirements, as a result of an audit that there was, the sub-recipient was unable to provide the necessary documentation that that procedure was following. As a result, HUD asked us to, insisted that we transfer the amount back to the CDBG account that they maintain on our behalf. As a result, it's necessary for us to do a budget amendment before the end of the fiscal year. This is an administrative item. There's still opportunity for discussion related to anything that we may follow up with that. I would like to still meet with, you know, Pastor Boone and Randy Richardville, and my schedule has been probably the biggest problem with that. I would still like to meet with them and discuss not this and as well as other items of interest as well. So, but this is an administrative item that I'm asking council to approve from a budgetary standpoint.
Thank you. Any comments or questions from council? If not, we're looking for a motion. Councilwoman Steelgrave?
I have no questions. I'll just make the motion.
Okay.
I move to amend the fiscal year 2021-22 budget to authorize the transfer from the general fund to the CDBG fund in the amount of $48,560.
Motion by Councilwoman Steelgrave, supported by Councilman Lamore, item 3537, the budget amendment for the general fund transfer to the CDBG fund. Councilwoman, did you say you had a question or a comment? Or no, just a motion? Okay. See no other comments? Clerk, please call the roll.
Councilperson Lamore.
Yes.
Felder.
Yes.
Whitman.
Yeah.
Steelgrave.
Yes.
Vining.
Yeah.
Mayor Clark.
Yes. Next item, please.
I have no further items, Your Honor.
So it's council comments. Councilman Lamore, your first.
Thank you, Your Honor. It was our honor tonight to witness the great presentation from the second graders of Arborwood. It was a fantastic presentation, and those are the type of events that we really look forward to here on City Council, the more joyous events. So it was our pleasure to host them and hope we can have that again in the near future. Stay tuned this summer for all the activities and events that we, the city, are putting on. There are a lot of them, and hopefully, everybody in the city has enough time to attend them. And that's all I have, Your Honor.
You, Councilman Felder.
Yes, thank you, sir. I'm certainly glad that we're doing work sessions again, and I hope that they were all as fun as this one with all the students that we had here this evening. That was a, that was a joy. Regarding an item that arose out of our last Commission on the Environment meeting, there was a discussion regarding a no-mow May. I know that's a, it's a, I'm not sure whether it would be a change in enforcement, a change in ordinance of how we do our grass cutting, but I know it's a program that's adopted by several other communities, I think Royal Oak and Ann Arbor. I can get you a list. So I guess with any ordinance, would it be the preference of the council to refer to a committee for discussion? And then the relevant committee discuss it and make a recommendation to bring it forward? How would you like that to move forward?
Well, I think if there's, I received a correspondence from a resident regarding that as well, and I saw, as I kind of drove through the neighborhoods and saw how the grass was getting well beyond the distance and the issues with that, you can mow the grass, or if you don't mow it for the reasons stated, then it makes me think about others. But I don't think it's necessarily a committee as much as it's the administration to, I'll just say, have a staff analysis brought back regarding no-mow May, meaning not mowing the grass in the month of May. But I know that's almost over now, but it'd be something for the future.
It certainly would be, yes. Would you like that I confer with, with administration on that item?
I think Mr. Pastu's taking a note. I'm trying to think who that might be. It might be through the, I mean, if council has a desire to want to meet to discuss this for next year, but I would first ask Mr. Pastu to maybe do some, I think administration, somebody can pull up the information to start with, and then have an idea what it is, come back with a work session, say what it really means. So everybody, you know, council understands it, but also those that are here and present, and is it some, maybe find where it's been done that been beneficial, but others may not have been beneficial.
Certainly, no, I think that that warrants the discussion. Yeah, I'm happy moving forward in that direction if that's your preference. In the same way, I know that the dead end on the rain at Manor is becoming sort of a traffic and safety nightmare regarding the school kids there in the mornings and the afternoons for pickup and drop off. Similarly, would you like that referred to the administration for discussion, or would you rather have it go to the traffic committee?
Is there a, is there, I guess, my first thought would be if it goes to the traffic committee, it'd be for a specific action item, parking, no parking, one-way. It can't be one-way because it's only one way in, or it's a dead end.
Yeah.
So it could go to the traffic committee, but I don't know what the request, there's always an ask that comes with that from a resident or on a traffic committee is what they would like to have or see. I don't know that there's an alternate route.
If I may, Your Honor, I'll just, what I can do is meet with Councilman Felder, Mr. Lewis and I, kind of take a look at what's possible and how you would approach what's a really challenging traffic circulation area there on the west end of that street. So, you know, I'm not sure what we have to work with as far as land, but it is, you know, something that, you know, we can take a quick look at and see what's possible and hopefully make some improvements.
All right, that'll work.
If you're okay with it, we'll just, we'll meet with Mr. Felder, Mr. Lewis and I, and see what's possible, so.
Yeah, I'm comfortable with that process if that's the process you'd like us to take. I understand that some of our committees are labeled advisory committees and others are not. Is that just a nominal distinction, or are we, is there a functional difference in that we ask our advisory committees to advise us on certain items?
Well, you know, if they're ad hoc, that means they're meeting for one purpose and then they disband. If it's a standing committee, it's for long-term. You know, establishing committees, I, you know, we had some chat about that, is trying to get more residents if it's a community committee, but also even council, getting council to be able to meet and discuss and bring something back. I think this one here, because it's going to take the review of the city engineer as well as administration, it might be the start point because I'm not sure what the ask is or what the direction it might go, and it might be something that can be vetted that way first. If it's something that'd be long in discussion of a council action, then I guess we can come back and view it as a committee, an ad hoc committee, depending on what comes out from that.
Yeah.
Okay.
Well, I'm just sort of bringing up the issue. I'm not trying to propose a solution. I think that that discussion would happen in, either with the administration or the committee, depending, so. Okay?
Thank you.
If you will, relate it to any solution with that and, you know, so if there is, we got to find the solution first.
Yeah, yeah. Thanks, sir. That's all my comments this evening.
Thanks, Councilman. Councilwoman Whitman, any comments this evening? No comments? Okay. Councilwoman Steelgrave?
Good evening, Your Honor. I, I agree with Brian. Those little kids sure undertook something there that was pretty cool, that they did that. And I hope everyone's enjoying the great weather. Outside of that, I have nothing else. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilwoman Vining.
Yes, Your Honor. Yeah, I'd like to thank the Arborwood Eagles for coming out. They were so cute. So, yeah, they did a good job. They went deep into the research and everything. I was impressed. For second graders, so. Also, I see we have some members from the NAACP Political Action Group here, and the MLK Bridge was on the workshop agenda. I forgot how much we allocated.
Proposed for the CDBG is an additional, I think, $135,000. You know, we've used a number of sources between Capital Projects Fund, our two-mil trail levy, and also just basically thinking the DDA will put some money into it as well. So we still, we're almost there.
And when we get there, we'll be putting out RFQs for that or RFPs for that?
Well, I think part of it is in looking for Mr. Lewis, wherever he might be. He's back behind me. But clearly, and if I may, come on, look at me, Patrick. You're right. I think the consultant we worked with, with Fishbeck, okay, you know, we would, once we have enough funding, I think we'd go back with them and look into a more detailed design. They gave us some conceptual alternatives, and now you would have to go into the details of, you know, what would be required as far as, you know, the structural aspect, the ramps, replacement of the decking. And there's certainly environmental conditions related to the painting and how you encapsulate what you need to for that, and lighting is an issue. So all of these things would have design elements that would be part of the project.
Yeah, so excited that that's on the radar now. We're making some progress with that. Also, thank you, Patrick. We finally got the garden shed installed at the Salma Rankin's Community Garden. So we're going into our eighth planting season, and we're really excited. So I'll keep you guys updated on that. We plan on growing hundreds of pounds of vegetables and giving them away to the community like we do every year. Also, there, I didn't bring a flyer, but there are actually two Juneteenth events going on. The one that Stephanie spoke about earlier is on Saturday, and then there's a community block party at 624 Elmira Street, affectionately known as Montague Park. There'll be a community block party there on Juneteenth, which my son reminded me is Father's Day. Sorry, dads, how we always shortchange you guys. But I said we can solve that problem by, everybody just bring their dads to the Juneteenth event. That's Sunday, June 19th. Lots of activities, free food, live music, a community talent show. So there'll be lots of fun things for dad to do there. So after you go to church or take dad out, don't spend your money, bring him and let him get all the free food and activities over at Montague Park. So I'll be giving an update on that. So, yep, there'll be one on Saturday, and then there'll be one on the actual Juneteenth holiday. And this year is 157 years. I know the administration just got around to making it a national federal holiday, but it's been celebrated for 157 years in this country. So we're excited to keep that at the forefront. So that's all, Your Honor. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilwoman. I just have a few comments. I'm gonna start by, obviously, we have consent agenda that got passed, all items got passed in the one vote, but just, just wanted to make a comment about one of the items on the consent agenda was scheduled on the Community Development Block Grant Annual Action Plan for the public hearing. The public hearing is being set for June 6th. It's where there'll be a review of the funds that are going to be allocated to the CDBG. It was discussed at our work session earlier. You can watch that as well if you want to go back and watch the work session meeting, which is available, was livestreamed, but it also is on YouTube. So that was one item. Last item is, you know, I always talk about the resurfacing of projects, and there's other, many things that you can go back and see. But, you know, the River, Riverview Avenue resurfacing is an MDOT-funded project, significant project, a significant cost, but the idea is that that's moving forward, and much of that was done last construction year, but the remaining part needed to be done well this year with our federal funds and local funds. So just bring those up to speed because obviously, the residents on Riverview will know what's coming again, but they'll have from one end to the other will be transformed. Arborwood School, that was great to see the students, as everybody said, but it was interesting to watch them as they went through and did their analysis and data and what they'd like to see in the city of Monroe for not only themselves, they said, with their families and friends as well. We won't have another meeting this month, at least not scheduled at this point. And with that, the Memorial Day Parade will be coming up this month on the 30th, on Monday. It's at 2:00 PM through the downtown. The VFW Post is hosting and sponsors that. It'll start at Jones Avenue, come up North Monroe Street, and finish downtown, and they usually have a activity or a commemoration ceremony on the bridge. But you call the VFW Post. If you had questions or interests, their number is 734-242-0526 if you have further. And I had talked about activities, and Councilman Lamore mentioned it, and others did as well, but the concerts in Spark, concerts in the parks start this Thursday, and they're usually at 7:30. I believe that's when this one does start at 7:30. But check the schedules on the city's website as well as elsewhere through the Parks and Recreation, because some of the events and activities on some Thursdays will be at 6:30 and some at 6:00. But the general start time is at 7:30. So those are my comments for this evening. Clerk Treasurer Lavoy.
Only comment I have is that Cultivate Community, which has been on an annual process, project that's been very successful in helping to beautify some neighborhoods and kind of just get the community spirit going, that's taking place this weekend. We, I know that there are some here in the audience and on the dais who will be participating. So other than that, I don't have anything.
Thank you. Mr. Pastu?
I have nothing else tonight, Your Honor.
Very good. So it weren't citizens' comments this time. For those just kind of did a review, do a review. If you wish to speak, please come to the podium and ask, did you state your name and jurisdiction of residence? And as we have with the rules of the chamber, is three minutes. So are there any comments from those present here this evening? Any com, I see a couple movements. There's, we'll come to the, next to the back. Yes, sir. Name, please. Name, please.
I'd like to say, as you know, we've been talking about this PUD that my subdivision has, and I would like to ask the city council members to review that PUD. I've reviewed it in very much detail. I've shared some with Mr. Pastu, and Mr. Pastu and I are supposed to have some meeting sometime soon, I hope. I know it was 14 days ago that we spoke on the phone, and just so you guys all know, I've been trying to get with the Building Committee to build what's in the PUD, but there's some hangups based on some other agendas that the city, the Building Committee let me build, but now say I can't do what I want to do, it's in the PUD. So we're, we're having some discussions. I started a month ago, just so you all know. I emailed this Mr. Pastu a month ago, along with the Building Commission, and asked for a meeting to talk about this agenda, to try to get fixed. At this point, we have not come to any meeting or agenda at this point to try to solve this problem. So if it doesn't happen soon, I will be back to see you guys again, to ask for your help to try to move this forward in the necessary process. So, thank you.
Thank you, and we'll look at the calendar and find where this dates as we get toward the, and Mr. Pastu?
Yeah, if I may, Your Honor, and I, you know, certainly apologize for not being timely in my response with it, been tied up with a handful of other things, but the essence of the decision, or the essence of this issue is building a large, I think, three-car garage. There's, it may be silent, I think it is silent in the PUD design guidelines with it. The question is, does it fit within the underlying zoning, which is residential? I just, at the last meeting, had asked, my meeting with Mr. Buds, to kind of take a look at that issue, and that was last Wednesday, so.
Sure.
You know, when we get an answer, I'll be meeting back with you related to that.
Sure. Just so you know, I live in a, I have a 105-foot lot, and the PUD for my section says, "Any lot over 100-foot can have a three-car garage." That's all it says in the PUD. I've read the pattern book. I've thumbed through every page, I've highlighted every page. There's nothing that says what size, what style, nothing like that in the PUD or the pattern book.
And then we'll just follow up to make sure that the underlying zoning is compatible with that as well.
Sure.
And that's when adopted the PUDs, don't maintain the underlying zoning associated with it.
Sure.
When we get a chance, you know, Mr. Buds and I, I'll talk with you when I get a sense of whether it's doable or not and a detailed explanation as to why.
Sure. Appreciate it.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Other comments from those here this evening? Please come forward. Name and address of jurisdiction. Ms. West Michigan?
Hello, my name is Reese Johnson, and I live at 6500 St. Heather Road, Monroe, Michigan. So I am the founder of PRISM, an LGBTQ+ support group for youth and teens in Monroe. I am here tonight on behalf of myself, the members of PRISM, and many others in Monroe to ask the city council to fly a pride flag for the month of June. I will even personally donate the flag to the city. All you have to do is fly it. I may only be 16, but I'm a vital member of this community. I attend high school and college in Monroe. I work in Monroe. And aside from running PRISM, I volunteer regularly in our community by serving dinner at the homeless shelter, holding personal fundraisers for those in need, attending rallies, reading to children at the local schools, cleaning up the river raisin, joining the Cultivate Community Monroe team, which I hope to see you all, and doing whatever I can to make our city its best. Three months ago, I was crowned Miss West Michigan's Outstanding Teen. While on Muskegon for the competition, I noticed numerous pride flags around the town. It made me feel safe and welcome in a new place that was unfamiliar to me. This made me realize that flying a pride flag in Monroe isn't just a way to let citizens of Monroe know that they are welcomed and accepted, it's a way to let anyone who visits Monroe know that they are in a loving town. Most people assume that the pride flag is specifically for the LGBTQ+ community, but did you know that each of the colors stand for something? Red represents life and passion. Orange represents healing and celebration. Yellow represents sunlight as well as new ideas and thoughts. Green represents nature, prosperity, and growth. Blue represents serenity and peace. Purple represents spirit and pride. Aren't these all words that we'd want people to use to describe Monroe, its people, its culture, and our community? Shouldn't we want visitors to know that we are a welcoming place? Next month, I will once again travel to Muskegon to compete for the title of Miss Michigan's Outstanding Teen. And while I may be representing West Michigan with my title, I will also be representing my hometown, Monroe, a place that I am proud of. Nothing would make me happier than to have the opportunity to present Monroe as a loving, accepting, and welcoming town to everyone, not just the LGBTQ+ community, to let our great state of Michigan know that the great city of Monroe is a city that leads, accepts, and protects its residents and visitors alike. Thank you for your time.
Thank you for your comments. Other comments from those present here this evening? Seeing no other comments? Oh.
Asia Hawthorne. I live at Murray and Front Street, right downtown Monroe. I just, I don't have anything prepared. I just wanted to say thank you to the city of Monroe for bringing back events. Thank you for keeping our city safe during this difficult time. I can't imagine the amount of pressure that you are under, but I'm just, as an event photographer, so relieved that our outdoor events are back and in full swing. And thank you, Councilwoman Vining, for providing us with that update about the Martin Luther King restoration of the Martin Luther King Bridge. That's really important to me. That was, it actually brought me to tears when I first moved here and saw that we actually have a bridge dedicated to Dr. Martin Luther King, and I would absolutely love to see what, what's the acronym, CDBG? What they have in store for us. And of course, I'll be taking pictures of it. So thank you so much, everyone.
Thank you, Asia. Other comments from those present here this evening? Seeing none, motion, please.
Your Honor, I'll make a motion that we go into closed session for the purposes of land acquisition and labor negotiations.
It's motion by Councilwoman Lamore, supported by Councilwoman Stillgrave, to go into closed executive session for property acquisition and collective bargaining for labor negotiations. Sorry. Clerk, please call the roll.
Councilwoman Lamore?
Yes.
Felder?
Yes.
Whitman?
Yes.
Stillgrave?
Yes.
Vining?
Yes.
Mayor Clark?
Yes. And thank-